Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Board of Education meeting. We will now ask that we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance by Mrs. Roseanne Barton and for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. I will now ask for a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second. There's been a motion and a second for the approval of the agenda. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Alrighty, communications, Ms. Mathis.
Yes, good evening, everybody. Glad to share some very important communications with you, including the first one. We have the opportunity tonight to congratulate 21 recipients of grants from the City Schools Foundation. And these grants are in the amount of over $24,400. And there, you'll find a list of the people who are the recipients of the grants behind your agenda. I'm going to quickly read the names of the people who have taken the time to write these, our fabulous teachers, Kay Perkins, Rebecca Few, Becky Holden, Doris Coffey, Judy Gritten, Kristy Robinson and Ashley McKnight, Felicia Ruse, Martin Ridgely, Kimberly Swift, Cheryl Pascal, Minerva Smith and Teresa McCarthy, Margaret Moore, Melissa Farmer and Rachel Harden. And then Minerva Smith and Teresa McCarthy wrote another grant and received funding for it, Kathy Latondres, Tony Leathers, Courtney Brown, Chad Fletcher, Cheryl Baxter, Mary Vittentonio, Meredith Davis, Nancy Giles, Phyllis Williams, Stacy Burt, Sue Copeland and Susan Brown. And the amounts of these grants ranged anywhere from $120 as the low to up to $4,514.39 for a project called Let's Scope It Out. And the grant was written by Kathy Latondres of Case and Lane. We're very proud of her and proud of all of our grant recipients. Just a quick rundown of the schools. Bradley received four of these. Hopgood, Mitchell, Nielsen and Discovery School received three each. Case and Lane, Pittard and Black Fox each received two and Scales and Northfield each received one. So we do congratulate all of our teachers for going the extra mile for their students. Our school nutrition program has been awarded a $20,000 grant from the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. And these funds will be used to purchase a dish machine for Hopgood. And the Tennessee Department of Agriculture and Health presented the system's school nutrition program with the Local Foods for Local Schools award. And this is because our schools have been using food from the area farmers to make sure that children are properly nourished and have fresh, fresh foods. Want to thank the American Heart Association. The Heart ball organizers donated eight new automated external defibrillators in memory of Matt Lovejoy to our schools. You may remember that Matt was a Murfreesboro policeman who died of a very young age of a heart attack. And next, to thank the Vestry and Outreach Committee of St. Paul's Episcopal Church, they donated $2,000 to our Family Resource Center. They particularly have supported Connie Middleton's efforts to help provide food, medical care and shelter to members of our community. And we congratulate Discovery School students, Rachel Massaro. She won first place in her age group in the Gordon Jewes Community Center triathlon. Shannon Miller won first place in the state for the Invest Write Writing Contest. And Jack Luoh published a story in the Young Writers Workshop, which is an online forum. Want to thank their teachers, Cindy Jones, Laura Taylor and Krista McKnight. And again, thanks to our students for going the extra mile, making us all look good. And those are all the items of communication tonight. Ms. Wade, members of the board.
Thank you, Ms. Mathis. Consent items, Ms. Mathis, is there anything before we ask? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent item?
I have a question about one of them. Should that come after the motion?
No, go ahead. You want to make the motion, then I'll ask the questions.
Okay.
Okay. Questions, are any questions?
Questions. On consent item C, who is currently on the management team?
Currently on the management team are the people listed there.
The ones listed here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Professional employee includes any person employed by any local Board of Education in a position which requires a license issued by the Department of Education for service in public elementary and secondary schools of Tennessee.
Do you have the number on that, just so I have that for my records?
I certainly do, 49-5602.
Thank you. Are there any more questions?
Question. Title changes on the management team as compared to what is on, what I know of as titles of supervisors here? A change there?
Are you talking about Danielle Kaminsky?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I did change her title. Traditional, the traditional title for our instructional leader for this school system throughout history, as far as I know, has always been Director of Instruction. Three years ago, when this position came open, I had the opportunity to look at a little bit different way of doing things. I wanted to put a person in there as a coordinator with the thought in mind of letting that person earn the title of Director of Instruction. So I named Ms. Kaminsky Coordinator of Instruction when she first came into the position. She has very definitely earned the title Director of Instruction, and I have made that change in her title.
Is there a difference on the pay scale from coordinator to director?
No, there's been no change in money whatsoever.
Do you have any other questions, Mr. Campbell?
No, ma'am.
Any other questions on the board? All in favor of approval of the consent items, we've already had the motion and the second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Like sign, nay. It has been approved, Mrs. Mathis. Action items, Ms. Mathis.
Yes, your first action item, we do need your approval of a revision to our FY-10 general purpose budget. The state is requiring that we meet the maintenance of effort test. And to do this, they have suggested that we budget additional revenue. And I'm going to, Gary has been very in touch with this. I'm going to ask that he explain to you exactly what it is we're doing and why the state has asked us to make this change. So, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Ms. Mathis. The state contacted us and said that because of the maintenance of effort requirement, and it's one little brief sentence, it says, "Maintenance of effort prevents local governments from reducing funding for education from one year to the next." Obviously, when they wrote this law, they were intending on continued increase in inflation, et cetera. When we did the budget this year, we looked at our actual, where did we really think we're going to be, so we reduced some of our anticipated revenues. Well, since the time we did the budget back in March, we have more accurate numbers. What we need to do is get $102,498 to meet the maintenance of effort. There was no intent to really reduce the effort of funding, it was just we're trying to adjust to what the true economy was. So if you'll turn to the next page, you'll see where we're adding revenue of $102,498 to the county tax area. The taxes in this come from property tax as well as sales tax. So if you'll turn to the next page, page three, you'll see what we have done. Current property tax, we are actually going to receive more than what we had in our original budget. So we were able to increase the property tax by $303,000. On the same hand, we are anticipating less sales tax. So while we had the opportunity to go and make this adjustment, we reduced it to $200,595 to come up with a net increase of $102,498 to meet the maintenance of effort requirement. When I talked with the state about it, they said they recognized that a lot of districts are in the same boat, they were reducing their revenue to come in from sales tax. And they said, under the law, you have to show that you receive or are going to plan to have that money. And if not, he says, you would just reduce your expenditures. So our plan is, as the state has requested, that we add the $102,498 in the local tax line, the county property and sales tax line, to come up with that to make sure that we do meet the state requirements.
Do any of the board members have any questions for Mr. Anderson? Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Mathis?
Yes, I would need your approval.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Please.
You had a question, Ms. Toppa?
Yeah, I want to make sure we understand, we're not getting $102,000 more from the state.
No, so, actually, state revenue is flat, it's the same as last year, exactly.
I was, I want to make sure we're all clear on that.
Same.
So, we're just increasing our budget as if we were going to get that, and then when we don't get it, we just won't spend that $102,000.
And that's exactly the way they said to do it, yes.
Okay. Everybody understands that.
Just a numbers game.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Toppa. And any other questions? Ms. Mathis, item number B.
Okay, I do need your approval, please, on item A.
Alrighty. Is there a motion?
I move we approve item A.
Second. There's been a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposes, the like sign. Thank you, Ms. Mathis.
Yes, item B, if you look behind tab three, I know you'll recall that you asked that I write a letter on your behalf and a letter that would reflect input from our principals and from our central office instructional staff, asking that the state change the TCAP testing window to a later date. The state has definitely listened to our plea and other school systems who may have written them. I really don't know how many actually wrote them. They did send out a letter asking for input, and they got a response back from 107 school systems. That doesn't mean 107 wrote them on the front end. So I think you all were definitely proactive in this regard. And I know our teachers and our principals very definitely appreciate that. So the state is, in short, going to allow the testing window to be extended. It will be a five-week window now. If you already had your test date set for March the 22nd and you want to leave it there, you can do that. So school systems may wish to do that. We, on the other hand, would like to take and are recommending that we take the latest date possible. We must have six consecutive days. So on our next page, showing the revised calendar, to do this, to have a later testing window, we must change the spring break on both our traditional calendar and also our alternative calendar. Apparently, the county has already made this adjustment in their calendar, so the spring break I'm showing on here is reflective and does coincide with Rutherford County's. So you'll notice about the fourth line from the bottom where the dates are, that our spring break for the traditional calendar will be March the 22nd through the 26th. It had been April 12th through 16th. And then the TCAP testing window shown at the bottom of the page will now be April 15th through the 22nd, and it had been March the 22nd through April the 9th. So that is a really nice adjustment, I think. And then on the alternative calendar, the spring break will be March the 22nd through the 26th. And of course, the TCAP testing window is the same for that calendar, the 15th through the 22nd. So our principals have looked at this, of course, our central office staff, and I'm sure our principals have shared this with their faculty, and I believe that we concur that this is a recommendation we would very much like for you all to approve, and it's something you wanted to begin with, so I do recommend this.
Is there a motion to approve? Ms. Duggan, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Questions?
I would just like to thank you for following up on our request with this, because I know there were numerous school systems that requested the same thing we did. And since our focus is children and what's best for them, this will give both our teachers more time to teach and our students more time to learn. I would like to encourage us to continue to petition the State Department, because I would still like to see testing move to the end of April, the first couple of weeks in May. I understand everything that's in NCLB, I have read that more times than I like to remember. But I just can't believe that in 2009, that our State Department cannot do something to hurry, you know, getting the tests scored because they're all computer, you know, scored. I realize somebody has to take the, you know, test booklets apart and have to feed them through the computer, but I just feel like that with the right type of pressure and encouragement that we could see that window moved again.
Well, they certainly did respond in this case, so it's hard to imagine they wouldn't continue to look at your request.
And they are to be commended for that.
Thank you.
We've had a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Thank you, board.
Ma'am?
Ms. Campbell.
The question to Ms. Mathis.
Yes, sir.
And I just heard this briefly on the news. Is there a move in Tennessee to put starting date of school after Labor Day?
There has been that move for a number of years, and it's, yeah. I'm not sure if it's made any more progress or not, but actually, by your approving the calendars back when you do, you're approving a before, you actually have to vote to have a before Labor Day start. So it's always been in the law that schools have to vote to start school before Labor Day. Yeah.
Thank you.
Reports and information, Ms. Mathis.
Yes, I know you will be very pleased to hear the report of our adequate yearly progress for our students. You'll find a news release behind tab four. I'm going to read parts of that news release, just for the record, to let everybody know that Murfreesboro City School System has had another banner year of TCAP testing results for students in grades three through six as measured by the No Child Left Behind Act. Ninety-three percent of our students achieved proficient or advanced results in reading, language arts and writing. And ninety-three percent of our students achieved proficient or advanced results in math on the 2009 TCAP assessment administered this past spring. Just to remind you, the benchmark for reading set by NCLB is that 89% must be proficient or advanced, and of course, we had 93%. That's in reading. And in math, 86% are required to be proficient or advanced, and we had 93%. Another thing we're very pleased with is that we made adequate yearly progress in all subgroups. And we are very definitely moving forward on the continuum of the high priority list. You all realize that we are a high priority school system, and we are moving in the right direction and are, have been classified now as improving. In spite, it's very mixed, I think it sends a very mixed message that we have so many students performing at a proficient advanced level, but if you leave one subgroup behind, then you can very quickly go to that high priority list. My comment about this to the media, our students continue to make exceptional gains, and as a group, we have exceeded the No Child Left Behind benchmarks every year since federal guidelines have been in existence. I'm very proud of the success of our students and thank them for learning what their teachers do such a great job teaching. We all owe a tremendous amount of thanks to all of our great teachers for their desire to continually hone their teaching skills in order to meet the diverse needs of their students. Our teachers go above and beyond the staff development requirements, above and beyond in applying for and receiving grants, as witnessed tonight. And I believe their willingness to give their all to help children is evidence in our system's gains. And I hope that after you hear Ms. Kaminsky's report of our outstanding progress tonight, that you will take the time to give a standing ovation to our teachers and to our students for our wonderful successes. I sometimes don't think we celebrate our successes enough, but Ms. Kaminsky is going to tell you about our successes, so if you would please join us at the podium, Ms. Danielle Kaminsky.
Good evening, everyone. I am delighted to be able to share with you our district assessment results based on the TCAP assessment administered this spring. And I'm going to show you a set of slides to sort of demonstrate and give you information regarding our annual yearly progress data. Okay, this first slide, it's a little hard for me because I can't see the slides at the same time as I'm talking to you. This first slide shows the number of students scoring at the proficient or advanced level in each subject area and grade level. You will note that the district proficiency level performance is above the state performance levels in all grade levels and subject areas. Again, the Tennessee NCLB benchmark levels in reading for this year is an 89% proficiency rate, and in mathematics, the proficiency rate is 86%. Okay. The next slide highlights our fifth grade writing assessment results by school and as a district over time. Our score results are about the same as last year's results, with an average score of 4.2 on a one to six scale as measured by the State Department in writing. So it's a rubric ranging from a one to a six. One of our goals this year is to increase the number of fives and sixes that students receive on this assessment. And in an effort to meet this goal, we will benchmark in writing as a system three times this year prior to the actual writing administration. Most of our buildings do benchmark, but this year, we're going to benchmark up to the district level and work together to improve this. Slide number three. All right, this slide shows the number of students scoring at the proficient or advanced levels in reading, language arts, as measured by the TCAP in each of the major subgroups. And the benchmark for this year was an 89% passing rate. And we hit the benchmark in all subgroup areas except for the following. The Hispanic subgroup in which we made an 86% passing rate, and we made annual yearly progress through the confidence interval, which the state allows if a subgroup comes close to the benchmark, usually within one or two percentage points. The economically disadvantaged subgroup in which we made an 88% passing rate, we made annual yearly progress in this area through the confidence interval. Once again, the limited English proficient subgroup in which we made an 81% passing rate, we made annual yearly progress in this area through safe harbor, because we improved upon our non-proficiency rate by 19%. And the special education subgroup in which we made an 80% passing rate and made annual yearly progress also through safe harbor by improvement on our non-proficiency rate. The next slide shows our mathematics results as measured by TCAP in each subgroup. Again, the benchmark for this area was 86% passing, and we hit the benchmark in all subgroup areas with the exception of the special education subgroup, in which we made a 76% passing rate and made the annual yearly progress benchmark through safe harbor, because we improved upon our non-proficiency rate by 19%. Okay? The next six slides show a breakdown of our Hispanic, limited English proficient and students with disability subgroups by subject area and subgroup by school. These are subgroups the district has been targeted for in the past, so we study them very carefully every year. The first slide is of the Hispanic subgroup in reading across the buildings. And you will notice, I've placed for you the number of students in testing in each subgroup. The reason I do this is so that everyone can see how all of the students impact the district AYP level. If you have under 45 students in a subgroup, in a particular subgroup, you cannot be targeted as a building. However, every single one of those students impacts the district's adequate yearly progress performance rate. So it's really important as a district that every building, regardless of the number of students in the subgroup, focuses on making sure that no child is left behind, which is really what this is all about. And so we look at each subgroup and each student all the time, all year long. And so this is the Hispanic subgroup in reading. Flip to the next slide, the Hispanic subgroup in math. You'll notice there's only one building in the Hispanic subgroup that has over the subgroup population of 45. Okay? You'll see, you can see the number of students. Next slide is the limited English proficient subgroup in reading. You'll notice also that only one building has over 45 students in that subgroup. Limited English proficient in math. Same deal, one student, one building with over 45 students in the subgroup. The next slide is of the students with disability subgroup in reading. We have two buildings with over 45 in reading, in students with disabilities in reading. And same thing, two buildings with over the N-count of 45 in mathematics for students with disabilities. So obviously, we study that very carefully to see where we're making gains and where we need to provide more intervention and support for children. And that changes over time because we do have students move from one building to the other frequently, especially in some of our subgroups.
How do you determine how limited the proficiency is of some of these?
The federal government and the state require that students who indicate at registration that they speak a language other than English on their registration card, receive a state mandated, which has to be approved by the federal government as well, English proficiency test, and it is based on the score on that test that determines whether the students qualify as limited English proficient students to receive services. The name of the test that we have just been, that we are using currently is called the TELPA, the Tennessee English Language Proficiency Assessment, is what it stands for. So it's brand new, we've just received it. We used to use a test called the CELA. So we've just switched from one to the other.
I was trying to figure out how limited the people were that were expected to be reading and...
It varies, and usually, the younger the student and the earlier, we, in fact, I heard from one of our teachers today, they received, two students that were absolutely, had no proficiency, so she emailed me and asked me how to administer the TELPA, because the children did not... children did not speak any English whatsoever, not understand hello and goodbye. So I have the feeling, I haven't received the response yet from the State Department, but I have the feeling when we read the directions in the test, it says we're supposed to sort of do a lot of hand movements and gestures and say thank you a lot. So I have the feeling we're still going to be required to do some form of that, so it's difficult.
Are there any other questions for Mrs. Kaminsky? Any questions?
I do have a comment. Just to clarify something, I know you kept, you kept talking about gains, and I just wanted to clarify for those who, in education who know about the scores, that these do not reflect the value-added gains that people may think you might have been referring to, but these are gains in the number of students who are proficient or score above the proficiency level. And I don't know if you all know that that varies at each grade level and with reading and math, and according to score that Ms. Ridley sent us today, I don't know if any of the other board members had a chance to look at that report that they've done for the state of Tennessee, it does talk about the gains and the TCAP scores, and will we be getting some kind of report on value-added?
Dr. Buttram, as you know, value-added is still embargoed and they've, and they have, and they have adjusted the benchmarks to match the more rigorous standards, so I can't really discuss it. Yes, you will, when the state report card comes out, that's when I will review the value-added scores with you. That data is still embargoed at this point.
Yes, I know. Are you all working toward anything in instruction in addressing value-added gains?
Yes, sir.
Even though they're not known to the public?
I'd like to, if I may just continue with my report, and I'll speak a little bit to some of our action steps toward the end, but yes, we are. And we are looking very closely at that. As we, as we talk about the achievement gains, we are talking about achievement and annual yearly progress, but that, that impacts our gains. Our value-added gains impact our adequate yearly progress gains and vice versa. And when you talk to the experts, they should impact one another. So if you're looking at each child individually and working to move each child individually to the next level, you should see gains in value-added as well as adequate yearly progress. We are definitely seeing movement forward in adequate yearly progress and movement over time in our subgroups, as you can see by the represented graphs. We continue to work on value-added gains, and I'll speak to that a little bit more. If you'll flip to the next slide, this is what I call the Christmas tree chart, all right? This chart helps to visually describe how we are doing as a district with our annual yearly progress goals. In this case, you want the Christmas tree to have less lights, okay? So the less colorful the chart is, the better we are doing as a district or school building with annual yearly progress, or AYP as we refer to it. If I might direct your attention to the system information in the bottom row, you will see that we don't have any red lights, and this means that we have made AYP in all subgroups and in both subject areas, okay? Last year, we had two areas that placed us on the high priority list, and that was the area of English language learners, that subgroup, in the subject area of mathematics. Last year, we received a 78% proficiency rate on TCAP, and this year, we have increased to an 86% passing rate. With the state benchmark being an 86% proficiency rate, we hit the target benchmark. Over time, we had an 83% passing rate in 2007, in 2008, a 78% passing rate, and in 2009, we're up to the 86% passing rate, okay? And we need to maintain that proficiency rate to make AYP in that subgroup next year. The other area in which we were targeted for last year were Hispanic students in the subject of reading and language arts, where we received an 82% proficiency rate in 2008, and this year, we've increased to an 86% proficiency rate with the state, the state benchmark being an 89% proficiency rate. The district achieved the AYP benchmark through the confidence interval, which the state allows. And we need to make an 89% proficiency rate to make the benchmark next year. We have a couple of other areas that we are going to watch, and you can see those. We've talked a little bit about them earlier. We are very close, not as close as we'd like to be. We'd like to be at the target. So that's sort of the Christmas tree chart. Now, just to talk a little bit about what we're doing, as you know, it takes two consecutive years for a school or a district to move off of the high priority list. And based on our results, we have moved to what the State Department of Education calls school improvement one or improving, okay? And I want to take a moment to acknowledge the hard work that our building principals, our central office instructional team, and of course, the classroom teachers in our district, where the rubber meets the road, have done to achieve this goal. We have a lot to celebrate, and we need to stop and acknowledge all the hard work that has been done. I'd like to ask that all building principals, teachers, instructional team members stand so that we can acknowledge the work that has been done so far. Now, with that being said, as a district, we must make annual yearly progress in all subgroups again next year, I mean, this spring, to move off the high priority list. Everyone knows that, and we will continue to work very hard to do that. This is going to be a tough year to do it. We have a new test, we have higher proficiency rates that we're going to have to make, we haven't seen the test, we have new standards that we are working with, everyone in the state is struggling with this. As a district, principals, teachers, central office staff, we need the Board of Education's support. We need your support as we strive to achieve our goals of moving off the list entirely. There is no one in this district who wants to stay on this list, no one. We know that it's going to take our entire community to move off the list, and we're reaching out to you for your support in doing so. I want to quickly review the action steps for improvement and some revisions that we have made with the help of our state technical assistance team members. With everyone's help and support, we will move off this list next year, and we look forward to a huge celebration, a huge celebration, and I know we can do it. Can we not do it?
Yeah.
We did it, we did it once, we're going to do it again. I'll just review a little bit about what we said we were going to do last year and what we've done, and what we feel has helped us move forward. We developed an academic profile on each student in the Murfreesboro City School District in grades kindergarten through six. We screen the students and benchmark three times a year using the ThinkLink and AmesWeb benchmark measures, and incorporate these measures into an academic profile. Building teams, data teams work together, look at the data, and they meet with the central office teams three times a year so that we can ensure that we have interventions going into those buildings directly to the students, each individual student who needs help. Students who perform below the 10th percentile on the screening instruments are referred to the response to intervention team. Now, that doesn't mean that we don't refer students who score higher than that. We have been looking at students who score up to the 25th percentile for interventions, and we, we use the team's recommendation as to whether we put more assistance in there or not. The RTI team provides ongoing research-based interventions and modifications to these students in an effort to increase student achievement throughout the school year. A second RTI coordinator has been added to our team this year so that more intervention and support can occur at the building level, all right? A district master list of students who fall within the NCLB benchmark subgroups is compiled, and we track each student on this list. An academic intervention plan is developed on each of those students, okay, who are deemed to be at risk, and then we work with each of those students individually with the building, teachers, principals, and we follow those students from one benchmark meeting to the other. We talk about students and how we can help them continually, and in particular, we discuss these students on a monthly basis, okay? The community outreach coordinators reach out to all parents of students who hit our AIP list. They actually make home visits and suggestions to parents, bring them information on parent universities so that our students can get all the support and help that they need and go way above and beyond. Can't say enough for our community outreach folks. We established four parenting centers last year to help support this effort. We hold parent coffees, teas, anything we can do to get our families in and to help support them. We conduct our home visits, and we take referrals from teachers, especially if we have a high rate of absenteeism, because it's really important that children be in school. We work very hard to help our Spanish-speaking community through our community outreach coordinator for the Hispanic community so that if they, if parents need translation or help helping their children, we get those resources out there quickly. We had a consultant who specialized in research-based practice instruction for second language learners, provide embedded professional development throughout the school district last year, assisting both general ed and ESL teachers, and we will continue work with that consultant along with Dr. Kathleen Kenfield, who we've worked with both through, we've shared jointly workshops with through Bedford County and also Rutherford County, who's been very helpful to us. Teachers have already begun, they have a year of incorporating the new state standards, and we have updated our championship playbooks and incorporated more practical strategies as suggested by teachers, instructional team members, and State Department officials. An extended school year program was developed for at-risk students who are on academic intervention plans, and we have offered after-school programming and tutorials based on TCAP information to students. Expert teachers throughout our system were identified to work in the program, pre- and post-testing was done, attendance was monitored. Extended contract funds supported this program, which is great. We did the same consulting-type deal in math. We did some embedded professional development in the area of mathematics with special attention last year on applying math facts for all students and the effective use of calculators. Particular focus this year will be on algebra and geometry standards. As we know, nationwide, the algebra standard is something that's really, we're going to see a lot on the TCAP and national exams. And the integration of science and math standards. Our new science and math instructional coaches have begun work in these areas and are previewing curriculum materials to assist teachers. They are also staff developing throughout the district on the new math standards. They've previewed all of the information off the electronic learning center, and we're in there. Professional development on academic vocabulary through Dr. Marzano's work was done last year in his office. This year, we are offering lunch bunch sessions throughout the year and in district on the new academic vocabulary list and practical research-based strategies for helping students learn the vocabulary. Family math and literacy nights were held throughout the district to educate families about literacy and mathematics content and to give them an opportunity to sample what the TCAP questions looked like a little bit and to let the students teach some of the strategies to their parents that we were teaching them in school. This year, some of the things we've added, three writing prompt benchmark assessments for fourth and fifth grade students will be conducted under conditions that mimic the actual fifth grade writing TCAP administration. Fourth and fifth grade teachers, along with the literacy coordinators, will grade the benchmark assessments and share scores with building teams to help prepare for the actual administration in February. A consultant from the Educational Consumers Group is going to work with us to conduct an analysis of our value-added data and provide the instructional team and building principals with practical suggestions for increasing our value-added gains. The focus will be particularly on schools where achievement scores are high but value-added scores are lower. Continued support from our district-state technical assistance team member, Carol Stinson, as well as Kay Musgrave and Pat Ashcraft, Dr. Connie Smith, Dr. Gwen Watson, and the State Department of Education team will continue. Our focus this year will be on closing the achievement gap for all students in all subgroups and meeting the new standards of performance on the new state exam. And we, we are going to make AYP this year, and we are going to make you proud. So appreciate your, your time and your ear, as the instructional team throughout the system helps each child achieve academic and personal success. Thank you.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes, when we were giving a much deserved standing ovation to our instructional team and our fabulous teachers, you know, it was just, it's just an honor for me to be able to do anything to say thank you, but I felt like we left out a couple people. We didn't thank Ms. Mathis for your outstanding leadership. It is, it is just having 93% of your students proficient or advanced in Murfreesboro City Schools in both reading and math is an outstanding accomplishment. Congratulations, Ms. Mathis.
Thank you.
And also hats off to all the kids, you know, and I know our teachers and our parents did so much to make it fun for them, bringing snacks and water and special afternoon activities, but hats off to the kids because that's a big thing for the kids, too. And Ms. Kaminsky, I want to take a moment and congratulate you for earning the title Director of Instructions. That's just... And let's see, I had one last question, and it's going to make, it may be surprising to you. We've heard about the subgroups that we're working on. I'd like to know, what does it mean for the individual student, our 93% of our population who are proficient or advanced in reading and math? What exactly does that mean for the child?
What does that mean as far as...
What have they accomplished? What does that, what does that say that they have accomplished?
It means that they did very well on a test.
Right.
It means that they answered a certain percentage of questions correct on the TCAP test, which would deem them in the proficient or advanced range. Now, the state of Tennessee's proficient and advanced range is not very high, and that's the reason for the new rigor and relevance and the new standards. So that's, you know, that's the reason we are working with every single child every single day to move that bar up, and it's going to be a challenge for everyone.
And it means that the children are being successful in the classroom. Is that correct?
Yes, it's a minimal standard proficiency in the state of Tennessee. All of these state exams are considered to be a minimal standard.
Uh huh. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Kaminsky or comments? Thank you, Ms. Kaminsky, for that report. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Personnel update, Ms. Mathis?
Yes, just a very quick personnel update. We have one person who's completed 90... We have one person who's completed 90 days, and then behind tab five, you will find those employees who have retired, resigned, or a leave of absence since your last report. Next month, you will get your report of all the new hires. There'll probably be 50 or 60 people on that sheet. We wait until all staffing is done, and we bring you one big report, and that will come to you next month. So you will be pleased, I know, to see where everybody has been placed, what their degrees are, where they came from, who they replaced, and that sort of thing. And the next report is the monthly revenue and expenditure report. It just reflects one month through July the 31st for fiscal year 2010, and you'll note that our net income is behind our expenses, and this is certainly not unusual, and it will not catch up until probably February or March. And I would like for Mr. Anderson to reflect a little bit on the report and share some things with you, if you would. Mr. Anderson?
Sure, we're at 8.3% of the year, so you can look at the page on revenue, which I wouldn't pay much attention to that one since it's not the best one since the first month. But that's why we need to have a fund balance so we can pay everybody and have the money available to us, because as you can see, in the month of July, we don't really receive any revenue, we don't receive any state revenue, and tax collections are down at that time. On the expenditure page, the third page of that group, we are still at a good number, at 6.3% overall. We had two categories that look out of line. One is the other support, 72810, which is our technology department, and what it is there is there's a $44,000 purchase that should have gone into regular instruction. We have already made the adjustment when we put this book together, so it goes into another category, which keeps that one, that category, in line. And the other one is regular capital outlay. We are getting more and more efficient about getting capital outlay projects started and done as soon as we can. We have a very narrow window from July 1st till the alternative calendar schools open, the third week of July, so we have a very short window to get projects done, so we're planning them ahead of time so we can mobilize right away. And so we obviously spend as much as we can those first three or four weeks of July, and that's why that number is 24.8 instead of what you would think to be at 8.3. But overall, our expenditures are in line for where they should be, we're 3/10 of a percentage under last year at this time. Oh, the ARR money, we have not received the approval from the state as yet on our plan, so we don't have any information on that as yet, because they have to give us the notification that it has been approved. So we're on holding pattern for that.
Thank you. Mr. Hopper, you have a question?
Sure. Remind me, we are still putting aside, setting aside money each year for technology enhancements.
Yes, sir, we're putting that, allocating it from the fund balance and showing it as a committed amount from our fund balance total, so it doesn't show up in the operation part.
The 240,000 a year or something?
No, it was 424. I think you all increased it by 100K, so it's probably about 525,000.
Yeah, I remember now. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Anderson? Attendance update?
Your last report, I hope you have a report on your desk. It doesn't look like your typical attendance report, because we've not completed a month for our traditional calendar schools. We're only into the 10th day for them, or the 11th day as of today, but the report that you have is as of yesterday, and it's the 23rd day yesterday for our alternative calendars and the 10th day for our traditional calendars. We're showing our total enrollment of 6,882 students, and this is up about 24 students from our ending enrollment of last year. We had budgeted 6,890K through six students, and I am sure we will reach that at some point during the year. What happened last year, we started out with a fairly steady enrollment, and then it peaked about the fifth month, and then it went back down the ninth month. So we have a lot of turnover, and we expect that again. And I think this points out just what a great job our teachers do with the continual turnover that they have in schools. Children bouncing around from one school to the other, and oftentimes from one city and one state to the other, and often from one country to the other. So we do have a lot of variation. I think all of our class sizes, I want to commend Mr. Wilkerson and Mr. Anderson for working so well together to get our class sizes balanced and working with our principals, and our principals working with us. It always takes a team to get this balance as close to a number that we like as possible, and so I want to thank our principals again for working on this. Always, there's some teacher who has to move, who's completely set up her classroom, and then suddenly, we have to move her to another grade, another room, and it is very disturbing. And we always apologize, but it's something we can't help, because we have no idea how many children are going to come to our door. We think we do, and then a new batch will come in. So that's pretty much our attendance report, and those are all the reports for this month. Ms. White?
Excuse me, do you have a question? Ms. Phillips has a question.
Do we still get growth money if we reach 2%?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
We certainly do.
If there are no other questions, is there any other business for the agenda for our next meeting, September the 1st? Are there any agenda items? Anything else? Seeing there is nothing else on the, on the... Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some may.
The second?
Second.